I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tamer, would you call the roll, please?
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Veremis.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Jensen.
Toledo.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Conquest.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present and zero absent. We have a quorum. In light of the ongoing COVID-19, uh, excuse me, the governor of the state of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, and all of the city of Elmhurst is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID outbreak, the mayor of the city of Elmhurst determined that an in-person meeting for the January 18th council meeting may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the aldermen of the city council participating in tonight's meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all the discussion and testimony during the meeting. Alderman Hill, can you hear me?
I can hear you, mayor.
Thank you. And he is the only one remote. We will go on then to item two. Wrong agenda. Item three, announcements. Are there any announcements this evening? All right, there being none. Item four, written communications for the public. Is there anyone in the public that has a written communication which they would like to deliver to the council? Thank you if you want to... This is in writing, or you want to speak?
I'll speak.
All right, so that'll be next. Thank you. So no written communications. We'll go on to item five, public forum. This is your opportunity to speak, and you may address the council on any topic you so choose. In the interest of the council achieving its business and fairness to others, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. When you are called upon, please approach the microphone right over there to my right. State your name. Address is optional. If you state your address, it helps us get back to you if necessary. With that being said, Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for public forum?
Yes, mayor. We have Elaine Jones.
Right. Ms. Jones, if you would like to approach the microphone. The one right behind you.
Oh, this one?
Okay. Dear Elmhurst City Council members, for over thirty years, the city of Elmhurst has consistently promoted that the single-family homes on the east side of Haven be protected by a soft transition. Your very own redevelopment plan maintained that new construction adjacent to our eastern side homes must follow a rigid setback in maximum height. But this is not happening. We property owners on Haven have seen four parking lots go in, one for each home or building torn down. Then you change the zoning at the end of Haven, permitting the single-family dental office to rebuild an obnoxious office a measly six feet from the sidewalk and adjacent condo, totally marred in the beautiful rowhouse appearance of the condos. We are not one home complaining. We are all the single-family homes on the east block of Haven complaining. Collectively, the residents on the east side of Haven own an equal or slightly more amount of property than what you had planned to have Ryan build on the west side. Perspectively, we should have an equal vote on the city council. We are one block from York Road, squeezed between heavily trafficked Schiller on one side and First Street with adjacent train tracks on the other side. Traffic is already an issue for us, soon to be unbearable. Ryan drew up a construction plan of apartment building to be built between the clinic and 102 Haven. You were not open and honest with residents from the start about Ryan's ability to combine the parcels and not follow the setback in height. But our alderman told us since the setback in height limitation was your intent, she suggested we fight for compromise. This monolithic apartment building is entirely too dense, too high, and seriously lacks green space and required setback from Haven Road. We pleaded with you to see our side, but zoning and planning approved the construction, ignoring their own redevelopment plan. What kind of government is this that does not follow their own rules, hides the truth from its constituents, giving autonomy to an independent contractor over the resident taxpayers and voters, and worst of all, diminishes the privacy, sunshine, and value of the properties of the most affected Haven residents? The city government has failed big time, but contracts made can always be broken. It is upon Elmhurst City Council now to do the right thing for the Haven Road residents and surrounding neighborhood. You have lost your dignity with us, but you could regain some of it by using your existing leverage to adjust the setback in height in our favor and add elegant landscaping on the east side of proposed apartment. And I have one more comment. The zoning rules need to be tightened up to avoid any further infringements on the residents.
Thank you. Alderman, Clerk Tamer.
That's all that's signed up, mayor.
All right, that's all who have signed in. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to give public comment but did not have the opportunity to sign in? Sir, if you will step over to the microphone and state your name. Address optional.
Good evening. My name is Sonya Tevalakara. I live at 375 East Huntington Lane with my wife and five children. I'm here today to speak on my, our home addition that we are proposing to be had this year. We are asking for a variance for the front porch for the new addition of our house. I believe all of those documents have been given to you, so I'm not going to go into all the details with it. But just wanted to speak to you about what exactly is happening with our home. Our home currently sits at twenty-five feet approximately from the sidewalk, which was the old, original zoning for the, for that block. What has happened since, it seems, is that the setback has been moved back to thirty feet. So when we began this process of trying to build our home or extend our home, we found that this was an issue. So we had applied for, to the city for a variance so that we can move the house back or keep the house at twenty-five feet. Upon that also, we are going to be reorienting some things specifically the front door, and we realized that we're going to need a porch for the front of our home. And so we also asked for a, an increased setback specifically for the porch to nineteen and a half feet so as to allow us to have a five-and-a-half-foot porch in front of our home. Looking at the block itself, all the homes pretty much, because it's sitting on an angle, our home is the farthest forward of all the homes on Huntington Lane. And so putting a porch in front of our house, when you look at it from the side, really doesn't make much of a visual impact in that all of the homes, because of the angle, kind of look like they're one right up to another. So our home would not be sticking out visually in front of anybody else's house. Obviously, on paper, it would, but it's not, visually, it doesn't do that. At the same time, of course, for us to be able to enjoy this new house that we are planning on, or this house that we are renovating, to have the space for my family, I have a wife and five children, as I said, a porch is very necessary. Our family spends a tremendous amount of time out on the porch, especially in the warmer months. It is, many of the neighbors have come by and mentioned that and spoken to us and talked to us about that. All of our neighbors that we have talked to are very much in favor of our proposal. And we hope that you can also see how important it is for us to have a space like this for our family to congregate, and also to be able to see the value of something like this that can be added to a home in Elmhurst. Specifically, a home that, in the future, of course, if ever we were to sell, having a porch that is a decent-sized porch would attract any family to want to have to, to want to live there, and of course, creates more of an ambience in, in the town. We are trying as much as we can not to make a big impact visually. We're trying to keep our tree, and we're trying to not mess around too much with the front, but I do humbly ask if you could kindly consider in our favor allowing us to have the twenty-five-foot setback for the house and the nineteen-and-a-half-foot setback for the porch. Thank you very much for your time.
Exactly. Three minutes, you must have practiced that speech. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who did not have an opportunity to sign in that would like to make public comment this evening? All right, we will close public comment, public forum. We're on to the consent agenda. I'm going to ask Clerk Tamer to read the consent agenda.
Minutes of the executive session meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on December 20th, 2021. Minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on January 3rd, 2022. Accounts payable, January 13th, 2022, $2,096,835.32. I should be doing the, sorry, the numbers here. 6.4, report, case number 21, ZBA 10. Thiva, Thiva Lakara, variations, 375, East Huntington Lane. 6.5, report, DMMC 2022 Legislative Active Plan. 6.6, report, Elmhurst Chamber of Commerce Memorial Day Parade. 6.7, report, National Opioid Class Action Lawsuit Settlement. 6.8, report, Aclara Annual Support and Maintenance. 6.9, report, Lake and Walnut Forest Main Construction Inspection. 6.10, report, Lake and Walnut Forest Main Construction. 6.11, report, Randolph and West Storm Station Electrical Repair. 6.12, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a Highway Authority Agreement and Supplemental Highway Authority Agreement by and between Buchanan Energy LLC and the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 6.13, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a Public Utility Easement Purchase Agreement between the City of Elmhurst and Bank of America National Association.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove either for further discussion or to vote against? There being none, I will ask for a motion to approve the entire consent agenda. Alderman Bastido, second. Alderman Toledo. Clerk Tamer?
Mulliner.
Absent.
I'm sorry.
He's left.
Oh, he did. Okay. Thank you. Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The entire consent agenda is approved. We'll move on next to item seven, committee reports. Clerk Tamer, if you will read the title.
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the city council approve a conditional use permit for indoor and outdoor non-residential parking spaces and a conditional use permit for preliminary plan unit development with site development allowances and a preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate the parcels into one lot at the properties comely known as 102-138 North Haven Road, Elmhurst, Illinois, for the purpose of constructing a multifamily residential apartment building with residential parking spaces and indoor and outdoor parking spaces for Edward Elmhurst Health with the addition of the brick presented by the applicant at the January 10th, 2022 DPZ Committee on the south and west sides of the structure. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval. Signed, Danny Palmsky Chair, Mark A. Mulliner Vice Chair, and Emily Bastido, Alderwoman Ward 6.
Thank you. May I have a motion to bring this item before the council? Motion, Alderman Palmsky. Motion to approve the report, I should say. Alderman Palmsky, second. Alderman Jensen.
Sorry.
Alderman Bastido, thank you. So motion, Palmsky, second, Bastido. Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, mayor. I want to thank...
Sorry, point of order, mayor. Sorry, Alderman Palmsky. Alderman Jensen and I, or sorry, Alderman Veremis and I both do not have internet access, and this particular item has a lot of documents. So I don't know if, we, that's why Alderman Veremis went and got a different computer. I just would like to be able to access those documents during the discussion. Sorry. It's like not loading the information. I should switch to...
Mine took a long time.
It's like a big hubbub.
Yours won't.
Finally came up.
It's not loading, yeah. Well, and it went, it did, it did pop up and said no internet connection, and then it came back. Oh, it's the mayor's touch. Sorry for the interruption. I just, there are a lot, I'd like to refer to the documents while we're having the discussion. Thank you, Alderman Palmsky.
Memo to the budget file for increased connectivity. All right, we all set? Everyone? All right. Thank you, Alderman Palmsky. Proceed.
Thank you, mayor. And my, my computer's a little slow, so I understand. I want to thank the committee for the work on this staff, and especially the residents. This allowed for additional participation, so not just in city meetings, but other meetings hosted by, by the developer. The first major downtown development to proceed from the conceptual stage within the PUD framework is before us tonight. It included two community meetings hosted by the developer, and I believe those yielded greater reflection of community priorities than in the past. The public engagement facilitated a number of changes to the proposed project. Community voices guided the design, the scope, and improved the project that complements the downtown and also the surrounding area. The committee is recommending approval of the report posted, summarizing a focus on developments, site development allowances for height and setback. The PUD process does not put strict limits on what could be granted. Rather, it serves to shape a project that answers a developer's request and is evaluated more holistically. Since the introduction of this project, the proposed Ryan Companies development has shifted to the west, flipped its pool orientation to create a more gradual step-down facing east, reduced its number of units from 204 to 200, and punctuated its design with aesthetic changes incorporating more brick and enhanced detail. And I would encourage everyone, there's a lot up on board docs, but if you want to take a look at some of the, you know, a little more detail on what was changed, there is a document underneath this library item that is labeled DTE DPZ. The committee is recommending minor height allowances, three additional feet on two elevations. The highest point of this development is twenty-five feet below the top of the closest downtown multifamily development, Elmhurst Place. Like the Ryan Companies project, Elmhurst Place is east of Palmer Drive. The committee is not recommending a site allowance for the sign height and does not support the request for a sign along the top of the building. So that is not going, not included in the request from our committee, or the recommendation from our committee. Aside from this being a transit-oriented development, projected traffic, as calculated and reviewed, is expected to be adequately accommodated. There will be no new net impervious surface to impose additional stormwater burden, but greater stormwater storage and capacity will result in routing stormwater to the west and doing so with a wider pipe, up to eighteen inches. New development downtown brings vibrancy and foot traffic to support our businesses and organizations. The enhanced design and layout of this project is expected to attract discerning tenants and appeal to our established community, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Palmsky. Any additional discussion? Alderman Dunn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this Ryan development had many iterations to the design concept. I believe that the developer has, has created a lot of concessions and listened to the residents and came up with a much improved project, much more neighborly-friendly, especially facing east. The renderings of the project, the landscaping, the current amount of brick are, I'd say, you know, one of the best that we've seen in recent developments. And the, one of the visuals in the presentation from the last DPZ committee meeting showing the massing, the rendering of the massing, what, what could be built if they strictly adhered to the zoning requirements versus what they ended up with, the, you know, what they ended up with, which, which was a much better project, much better look, and I think a much more neighborhood-friendly building and, and, you know, part of that, part of town. So I think it's a good project, and I do support it.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, mayor. You know, to back up a little bit further, Alderman Palmsky mentioned this is the first project to come through under our new PUD process, which I think is a good thing for the city to have. Prior to implementing and approving, creating that process, we changed our zoning downtown. Some of us were on the council when that happened. So we did the zoning change downtown that increased the height of the buildings that are allowed. And, you know, whether we supported that or not, and I didn't, that was what the majority of the council supported, and so that established our new zoning downtown going for, going forward. When it comes to the PUD process, I just want to read a little bit about the, from our zoning code, about the PUD process. So the intent and purpose. The purpose is to provide an alternate zoning procedure under which land can be redeveloped, developed or redeveloped with innovation, imagination, and creative architectural design when sufficiently justified under the provisions of this chapter. The objective of the plan development is to encourage a higher level of design amenity and public benefit than is possible to achieve under otherwise applicable zoning regulations. The end result can be a product which fulfills the objectives of the city's plans, including but not limited to the comprehensive plan and all other relevant plans, while departing from the strict application of the use and bulk regulations. So that kind of sets up why, why this process exists. And then just a bit more specifically, if you read through that section of the code, modification in conventional zoning and subdivision regulations are privileges and will be considered by the city only in direct response to the accrual of tangible benefits from, from the plan development to the city or the neighborhood in which it would be located. These benefits shall be in the form of exceptional amenities, outstanding environmental features, landscape, architectural or site design, or conservation of special man-made or natural features of the site. And, you know, of course, there's a lot more detail in the code. So I think, you know, this project is not far off of our downtown zoning standards. I think it's a good-looking project. I don't think it's different if you look at what we approved with the FIN project. They requested very little zoning relief. And I think this project is even an improvement over what we have at the FIN. So I think the committee did a good job. I think staff did a good job. But we are, through this PUD process, we are providing some zoning relief. And I think it is fair that when we give up some of that zoning, that we should expect some clear benefit to the community. So I don't think we've gotten that benefit through this process, but I do hope that we take one more chance to look at community benefits through the sale of the city's land and the uses of the proceeds of that sale. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Alderman Deuter. Additional discussion? Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. So as the alderman of the fourth ward, Mrs. Jones referenced that during her comments, I've been involved with the neighbors and residents, both in the fourth ward and throughout Elmhurst, people who came to the open house, from the beginning of this project, from, I don't know, I saw a timeline. I think it started back in May or April. And I would say that I am pleased at the process. I'm pleased with the input from the public. I think that the developer listened to both the public, listened to the commission, listened to the committee through all of their hard work reviewing these plans, and there's many, many documents. You know, I think Alderman Palmsky listed a number of the changes from the first time that this project was presented to where we are now. I won't reiterate those, but they were all steps in a positive direction, which were improvements addressing concerns that people within our community had about the project and, and concerns that some of the council had. I had a, someone asked me about stormwater. I thank Alderman Palmsky for reiterating the fact that that is a positive, both in the fact that the imperviousness is, is, sorry, the imperviousness is lower, so there's more pervious on the new project slightly, and they're doing some other things to improve the stormwater effects, as folks on Pine and Avon have had issues in our ward with water in the past. The other positive on this project is the fact that as it stands today, there have, the developer has not made any requests for TIF assistance. I think this might be the first maybe redevelopment project that has not, where we've gotten to this stage in the game where there hasn't been that request. That's a great positive for the community and the taxpayers of Elmhurst. So I think this project has a lot of things going for it. I'm inclined to support the project for those reasons. What I will say, though, is that there, I do still think that there is an opportunity for a couple of improvements, namely, brick on the east-facing side, more brick. I think that through some discussions with the mayor and our attorneys and the committee, that we can address those. This is really just an approval of the, the planned unit development part. There are still needs to, as Alderman Deuter referenced, there still needs to be the discussions on the sale of the property, and that will likely happen through an RDA process, which will need to be approved by this body as well before the project can proceed. So I will look to approve this part of the process tonight and look forward to continuing to make what I think is a solid and good project even a little bit better on behalf of Elmhurst through that RDA process. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Alderman Cahill.
I want to thank the, I want to thank the Ryan Company for investing their time and effort into our community. I want, we appreciate what you have followed the process and have not requested TIF dollars to support this project. The residents of Elmhurst will benefit by an estimated $100,000 in tax revenue a year. And I appreciate the community's input as I feel it has improved the overall proposal. I respect my fellow, I respect the time for my fellow aldermen on the DPZ committee and appreciate the time and detail they have put into the process. I feel there could be an even better engineering design that addressed more of the issues and concerns of the neighbors in Haven, which I understand would cost, would increase the cost. I would like to see the highest quality of materials used, not just meets the standards. This is Elmhurst. We want to uphold the highest standards we can. I would urge Ryan not to cut corners, but to build an example of how future buildings should be constructed in Elmhurst. I would love... I would love, I would like to see, Alderman Tulludo, more brick on the east side. And with that, I will say that I will support this meet, this committee's report going forward.
Thank you, Alderman Cahill. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. I also look at the renderings of this project, and it looks like a beautiful project, and if we can get, you know, high quality and additional brick to it, that'd be great. But as I see it, it's, it's an exciting project for, for downtown Elmhurst. I, I like the, the flow of the traffic being at the, the south end of that, that block. I think it provides a lot of options there. If I could, Mayor, I have a question for the committee. You know, a lot of the discussion I've had with residents was around setback and height. And as I look at the, the shadow studies, the, the way I interpret them is that, you know, what, what the, the current footprint and how it's designed is in line with, you know, some standard, allowable massing. I, I don't know that term really, but I compare them, just eyeballing it. I gotta believe that that's the, the conclusion that the committee came to, but could the committee explain a little bit more of the, the shadow studies and, and the findings?
Alderman Palomski, would you like to do that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Let me pull this up. You know, I don't have it before me, but I can say, thank you. We did ask between the first meeting after the commission and the second to take a look at shadow study, and, you know, we'd done that before with 255. And what it did is they compared shadow study with what could be built, as we're saying, as Alderman Dunn mentioned, like as of right, and with what they are proposing, and there was very little difference. So the question really was, well, should, had this proceeded without requesting a site development allowance as part of the PUD process, would it have been better or worse or the same? It appears it would be the same, so very similar to be. So essentially, because we're the, the highest point, you know, this has multiple tiers, the highest point is setback, so it is, it's not like the point closest to the neighbors is the highest point. So they were very similar, and the committee concluded that it would not be a, much of a difference for the neighbors. And in fact, we, we took a look at another picture of the renderings to see what would be the vantage point of the neighbors, and for some of the, the amenities or the siding and brick and design on the outside, we learned that there were components that maybe we thought would have been visible to the neighbors that perhaps actually wouldn't be. So the allowable, it's, you know, not really different, not very different from the allowable massing.
Alderman Brennan. So thank you, Alderman. That, that was the conclusion I came to myself looking at the, the drawings, and for that reason, the project's gonna have my support. You know, I, I think if that wasn't the case, I may pause and, and wonder, you know, I, I would question, you know, and have concern with respect to that, but given these findings and, and given the fact, following this through the committee, I, I have been impressed with the collaboration and the, you know, the teaming. I, I think the, the outcome of the, the shadow renderings just didn't magically happen. I, I do believe that, you know, there was an effort to try to, you know, be sensitive to the, the neighbors on, in the Haven, so therefore I, I will be supporting the project.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Additional discussion? All right, appears there's none. I will ask Clerk Tamer to please call the roll.
Mulliner, absent. Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palomski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Tulludo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Udara?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absence, absent. The report is approved. Thank you. And I will say, it's been, from my perspective, this is our first major PUD project, and I think it worked the way it was intended to work through the community meetings, and I appreciate the efforts that the, that Ryan Company has undertaken in order to work this through, and we will go on to the next step. So that's the end of 7-1. Thank you. We'll move on to resolutions. Resolution 8.1, would you read the resolution, Clerk Tamer?
A resolution authorizing the City of Elmhurst's participation in the national multi-state opioid settlement and ratifying the execution of related settlement agreements. See item 6.7.
All right. I may have a motion to bring item 8.1 before the council. Alderman Deuter, second. Alderman Udara. Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this resolution follows a report that we passed on the consent agenda. It gives the city manager the authority to authorize the city's participation in a national opioid, a nationwide settlement agreement related to opioids. We don't know yet how much could come to the city. It depends on the number of municipalities that out, that opt into this agreement, but I, the money that, any money that would come would be of great value to our community in our discussion at committee. Police Chief Ruth just walked through the number of overdoses that we've seen in recent years in Elmhurst, and over the past four years, each year we've had more than 20 overdoses. So this is an issue here, as it is nationally, and, you know, we, the committee supported the city manager's decision to opt into this settlement agreement.
Thank you, Alderman Deuter. Additional comments? All right, Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Mulliner, absent. Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palomski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Tulludo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Udara?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. Item 8.1 is approved. 8.2, Clerk Tamer, please read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the execution of a contract between Charlin Electric Company and the City of Elmhurst in connection with the stormwater pump repair at the Randolph and West Stormwater Pumping Station. See item 6.11.
I may have a motion to bring 8.2 before the council for approval. Alderman Brennan, second. Alderman Conquest. Any discussion?
Just a little background. So we are asking to suspend the rules here so we can get the Randolph and West Storm Station back operational come spring. Unfortunately, lightning evidently took out one of the controllers in the, the station, and this will allow us to, to get going on that repair. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Any additional discussion? Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Mulliner, absent. Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palomski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Tulludo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Udara?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. Resolution 8.2 is, has been passed. On to item nine, reports and recommendations of elected and appointed officials. Mayor Levin. The only thing I have this evening is that in lieu of Metro Superior Ambulance coming in with the giant check, they're not able to do that this year, but I wanted to report that we have received a smaller check in a large amount of $180,122, which is the, the amount that we receive under our agreement in excess of the cost. So that's the, for those Aldermen who've been here, this is something that is, that one of the benefits to our unique arrangement with Metro. That is all I have. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items. One, this weekend, on the 22nd, we will be hosting an electronics and clothing or textile recycling event at the Public Works Garage. That's from 8 to noon, as with, with partnership with the county, so people can bring their old electronics. There is a charge for televisions, but everything else is free to drop off. The second item I have is an update on our strategic planning process. A few meetings ago, the city council approved an agreement with Northern Illinois University Center for Governmental Studies to conduct strategic planning, and as part of that, we are doing some focus groups, and so those have come together with the help of the Aldermen and that of staff, and so we have confirmed, and we're doing a lot of these via Zoom because of the pandemic. So we will have a group from the frontline staff here at City Hall and the other departments. We have a business community focus group. We will have an intergovernmental or civic agencies group, which might include the school district, the park district, the university, the Rotary Club, Lions Club, and so forth. We'll have a focus group consisting of select people from our appointed boards and commissions. And then we have two resident focus groups. One of them is an invitation residence that have been selected thanks to the city council's help, and then we will have an open resident invitation focus group. That is on Wednesday, February 22nd, excuse me, February 2nd, 2022, Wednesday, February 2nd, here at City Hall, I'm sorry, on Zoom, 5:30 to 7:00. We are asking people to RSVP for it so that we can send the Zoom link to them rather than just generally putting the Zoom link out there to avoid any issues that might come up. So if people do ask, how can they be a part of it, and we have had people RSVP, please point them to this, this option. The other reason that we're asking for RSVPs is so that the Center for Governmental Studies knows how many breakout rooms they may need and how many facilitators they may need. So that's what I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. Item 10, other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the city council?
Just wanted to give a, well, I can do it.
Go ahead, Alderman Dunn.
Good. Yeah, just a quick report. We had an ONCC full committee meeting last Friday. We hadn't had one for a few months. The only thing really significant of note is the tech committee. One of the subcommittees in ONCC reported that they are forming a daytime noise committee, and Elmhurst will be working to get a seat on that, as that would be of high interest to us. Just wanted to report that.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, and for your help on that. Any other business? There being none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Bastido with the motion, Alderman Veremis with the second. I'll ask for a roll call on this one.
It was the second, I'm sorry.
Veremis.
Thank you. Mulliner, absent. Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
I'm going backwards. No, I'm good. Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palomski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Tulludo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Udara?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. We're adjourned. Thank you.